You guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you. Just getting the recording and streaming going.
So that's how you do it. progress zoom to each.
Is David Anderson online?
Yes.
Uh, people say, was Ron online?
Yes.
We are streaming now.
Laura's online.
Aaron's online. There's all the online purchases.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Hopefully, we can make this a quick meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to its order. And now it's five thirty-three P M. I can confirm that we have a forum. May I have a motion to adjust tonight's agenda?
All motion. Sorry, this is Rhonda.
Run a motion, Pat Second. We'll just do that. I'll a favor. I am opposed. None. We have an agenda. And no public comments this afternoon. There is no public, no public. Okay. Comments from council members. I think we need to relook at dates real quick for Christie's evaluation because the last weeks of school have gotten both of us. So our next meeting is on the eighteenth, right? Okay, so I think if Christie can get me her self-evaluation part by next Tuesday, if that works, then I can come, I can get it to Rhonda and we can formulate the survey questions and try to get them out. Let's see. Try and see Friday, get the survey questions out, then we need them back by Monday, guys, if that work in order to compile everything for Wednesday.
Yes.
Do we have till the end of the day Monday?
Yes, we can have till the end of the day Monday, midnight council.
But that, that's Father's Day weekend, so we're, some of us are a little spoken.
That's why I'm like, can't, but I, I also know that, you know, Christie's had this last week of school and graduation, so trying to force her to get me her stuff tomorrow to get our evaluation out, but with our survey out by Wednesday and back by Friday, it feels a little unfair.
Of course.
If you need me to get it to you, you just tell me when and I'll get it to you.
No, you, you, you're good. Just as long as we have till the end of the day Monday. We're, we're golden.
So Rhonda, if you and I can try to, if Christie gets us on Tuesday, I'll email to you and then we can try to get together sometime on the phone or on Zoom on Wednesday and then get them out so that we can get everybody's responses back by Monday, the sixteenth, and then I can put it together overnight and we can be ready to put that away. So I'm good.
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay, perfect. That was what I needed to reconfigure our deadlines because we blew the first set I set because of the last week's school and graduation. Okay, um, action on bars. Ms. Laura, would you like to walk us through the year-end bar you need?
Yeah, I didn't have any for tonight. It was really for the P P L N one. I was hoping A P S would get it to us by this point, but they didn't. Um, and that's okay. We should have it by our regular meeting and meet the deadline.
Perfect. Okay.
I have a question though, Laura. If they don't have it, can we just approve the next bar in line?
I think we tried that last year and they told us no.
No way. All right.
Like I tried to run one through even though they had theirs in process and they actually denied it and I had to redo it last year.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and the only other comment I'm going to make is Veronica, you get the award for the best board member because you're out of the country and you're here. So thank you for joining vacation.
Where is she?
I don't know where she is. I just know she's not here. So the next item, which is why we're here this evening, is discussion and action on carryover funds. Um, Ms. Christie, I will just kind of tee us up a little bit and then.
And I have a, I have a whole presentation together to help everybody keep all the pieces straight as well.
All right, so as you guys know, we are financially in a very good spot at the moment and would like to try to prepay or obtain services to improve our building and facilities that are not capital outlay now and into the next year to encumber the funds. And so Christie, Laura, Rhonda, Ben, Carlos and I met to talk about what we could do with regard to the lease and the foundation's role and what our lease terms were to look at possible prepayment or whether or not we could look at our, uh, hang on, I got the word right here, repair and replacement fund, because I actually did remember bringing notes. Because if you guys recall, for our repair replacement fund, we essentially have an additional sixty-one hundred dollars per month that we paid towards our lease based on the evaluation of the lender for projected repairs and replacements based on the last study they did for our capital needs. Thank you, Christie. And in that, that sixty-one hundred dollars per month, Laura, Rhonda, if I say this wrong, fix me, but it, it comes out of our H B thirty-three. And so one of the options we were looking at is that, as Christie's slide shows, we need three hundred and sixty-six thousand carried into it over five years and we've paid in a hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred. So we have about two hundred and seven remaining. And so if we were to pay now in June, which is permissible under the lease documents, the two hundred and seven four hundred, what would happen? Wells would issue us an invoice for that amount to pay into the repair and replacement fund. That will decrease our monthly lease payment going forward by sixty-one hundred dollars a month and it will increase our H B thirty-three pot by the seventy-three two hundred.
Sorry, that's per year over the next two years.
Um, and if you guys recall, H B thirty-three is a fund that can't be removed from us in any way, shape or form. And so we've got another capital needs assessment due in twenty-twenty-eight, so three years from now. And that could require our lease to go up, but for the next two and a half years of this repair and replacement fund period, we decrease our lease payment and bank our money in H B thirty-three. So we do two things by doing this. We reduce our liabilities going forward and increase our H B thirty-three to prepare for the next capital needs assessment and the increase in rent that will come, so that we're not upside down. So with regard to our current operating funds, based on our conversations, and I did ask specifically about whether or not this would draw an audit problem in our audit and the just determination that Ben and Carlos made was no, and that this was a fiscally sound use of the school's funds in relationship to its obligations to the foundation and being fiscally proved. So with that information, we need to talk about the other items, but I think this is an area that we would demonstrate our fiscal responsibility, give us some room and get us a little bit ahead of the game while protecting some of the money we have in our operating account right now. So I would recommend that we consider looking at this in conjunction with the other things that Christie's going to bring up to us and, and then we can decide what we want to do. But this was the one that I am the most knowledgeable about from our meeting the other night.
This one sounds like a no-brainer.
Oh, two, two hundred and seven thousand. When we had our meeting on Monday, that we, Ben had said two hundred and seven thousand. He emailed me today and said two hundred and seven thousand four hundred and I just didn't get it still both places, so I apologize.
But to Aaron's point, I, I think that it's a no-brainer too if we're not going to draw an audit finding and we can pay down this liability now and bank our extra lease payments for the future. I think that's the right choice.
Yeah, use extra money we have now and decrease obligations in more uncertain periods.
Exactly, and we have uncertainty given our enrollment numbers from this year and hopefully we'll meet our numbers and projections on our budget for next year, but the combination between the citywide and statewide decrease in enrollment across the board and the uncertainties that we're facing on the federal side, I feel like this is the right choice.
Have we talked to auditors about this at all?
I did not have an opportunity to talk to Jason. Did you have an opportunity? That was the one thing I wanted to do before. I have not talked to our auditors. I was gonna try and paint Jason to see if he had any concerns, but given our timeframe between Monday and today and my day job, I did not have time.
Yeah. Right? No, no, I mean, everything I see, it seems like a no-brainer.
And I think it will take us, you know, a, a minute of time to get the process going, so it may be that we don't even have the invoice till our next meeting. It would give us a little bit of room to try and ask some auditor questions just to give ourselves some comfort level.
Okay.
If we need it. But I, I do feel like I, I trust Ben and Carlos enough to, and Ben's experience in his auditing past to reasonably rely upon his thoughts on this issue.
Because that's what he did, right? School audit?
Mm-hmm.
No.
And now he's the internal auditor for C and M. So, um, that, that's that one, and then I will let Christie take the others because I do not know what she has done since when.
A lot. I know a lot. All right, so we'll start right here. So right now, we have a projected carryover of approximately two point two million. So that's what I was looking at as we were, as I was working through various projects and ideas. We, one of the things that I will talk about a little later on is capital outlet, excuse me, capital outlets and how that ties into all of this. So right now, with everything I presented, just be thinking about our projected carryover, okay? You'll go ahead and go to the next line. These are the proposed projects that I'm going to talk about in more detail. So I have a slide on each one of them or I can talk about it in a lot, in a lot more detail. So we talked about the repair and replacement fund. We're going to talk about the foundation invoicing the school for bond disclosure requirements in the amount of thirty-five thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars. We're going to talk about technology equipment totaling one hundred twenty-five thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. Furniture at approximately seventy-five thousand. Asphalt at the, at the annex at approximately eighty thousand. A front door visitor entry, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but ten thousand, and then building and playground improvements at one million eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars. Okay, so a total of our projected carryover, I am proposing looking at about one point five million. All right, so you can go ahead and go to after this slide, the foundation invoice or the bill for bond disclosure requirements. So Ben sent me an email and he emailed me a post-up on this a little earlier in the week, I think on Tuesday, and said that the foundation can bill for certain costs in terms of the audit, tax return. They can build the school for those things that are required to meet our bond disclosure requirements. So in order to meet certain aspects of our bond, there's things that have to happen and the foundation is able to build the school for that. And so what happens is they, they give us a bill, we pay it towards usually at the end of the year. And I forget how much, Laura and Rhonda, you may remember about how much that is. I would say sixty-eight hundred. Does that cover?
You're so close. It's sixty-nine hundred. Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks. And so the foundation did not begin billing the school for this until the school year twenty-two because the school didn't have the money. And so they just didn't bill us because they didn't need to. So what Ben is, is saying like, hey, if you guys have a question now, we, we want to send you the bill for this. And so it would be backing up and, let me see, I, I meant to put in there starting what year that was and they didn't include it. We pull it from my email real quick. Because I can't remember how far back it goes.
Well, while you're looking at that, I'm having a gut feeling about the back because of the fiscal year carryo, you know, the rule that says you can't pay a bill incurred in the prior fiscal year and current fiscal year unless it was already encumbered.
Makes me a little nervous too.
That one makes me nervous.
Yeah, so what, so Ben says going back to two thousand seventeen and what he said is that he is trying to get some information from Denise and, and he, I just sent him our lease so that he could do a double check on the lease. He said, from what he read, from what he reads in the lease, he doesn't believe it's going to be an audit issue. He's trying to reach out to someone at Moss Adams to ask for their take and he said that he is waiting, as of this morning, he was still waiting for a response from the auditors about the potential for requesting prior year's expenses and he could let us know. So it's something that's kind of, we're still working on, but I wanted to make sure to bring it, to bring it up for discussion.
Yeah, and that one, I'm, I'm going to need to look at a couple of things that Aaron probably wants to too, because even if the lease allows us to do it, I'm still concerned about the fiscal year problem going backwards. So this one is not one that's on my primary list because of those concerns.
But why he has Moss Adams on the phone, can we also ask about the the, the prior two hundred thousand dollar expenditure?
And, and I just want to clarify, so he is contacting Moss Adams, not Clifton Larson?
That's what he said in the email.
Okay, I'm trying, I've been trying to schedule a time with Sheila from Clifton Larson since they're going to be our auditors for next year anyways, and I can ask those questions on that end.
Yes, please.
Yeah, they're, they're the auditors that matter, so I agree with Laura.
All right, and then if we could just, I, I think that you definitely need to gather some more information on this one before, and, and if we could do, I think if we can do that before the eighteenth meeting, then we could, we could put this one on the agenda again for the eighteenth and just talk about, and then once we have all of those details worked out and then make a decision at that time, because the, it would be the foundation billing the school. If we decide to move forward with it, we would be able to do that by the end of the month without, you know, which is part of our goal.
Yeah, and Christie, Rhonda, tell me if my impression is wrong, but I felt the same way after our conversation on Monday that it wouldn't be too much of a lift to get the invoice on the repair and replacement so that we could get it paid by the end of the month. But this, these two foundation ones, given the, the audit question, may have to be voted on at our next meeting.
So, yes, I agree. And Ben said he just heard, he just texted me and said that he just got this info that the interest counts on our repair and replacement fund, so the number to fully fund it is actually a little bit lower. And it, and the lady said, as of today, the repair replacement balance is one sixty-five nine seventy, which leaves an additional two hundred thousand twenty-nine dollars to fully fund the account.
Two hundred twenty-nine what?
Two hundred thousand twenty-nine dollars.
I guess I'm just wondering why we cannot approve it, saying just pending auditor approval so that Christie can start on a lot of those things right away. Like it'll be fast for the foundation, but some of the repairs and other things, that will take a while to set up.
And that was my proposal, Rhonda, these two foundation items. I think delay, I think on the other items she wants to do to get under contract, we cannot.
Right, right. Okay.
Yeah, and I would say not pending auditor approval, just absent auditor disapproval.
Yes, exactly. They don't have to approve, but they have to tell us we're not going to cause ourselves a problem. They don't have to like it.
They, they don't get to run our school. They can just tell us if we're doing naughty.
Yep.
All right, any more discussion on those two items from the foundation? All right, let's go ahead and move on and talk about technology equipment. So I did secure several quotes and we are looking at replacing one of the servers at the main building. It is very, very old and is in need of replacement. And I've actually been talking to our I T company for about, well, at least a year and a half about it. So we wanted to add that in here. So we're looking at fourteen thousand six hundred. I'm looking at an additional one hundred Chromebooks for students. We have it split up into twenty-five with touchscreens for the younger kids and seventy-five non-touchscreens. The touchscreens are a little more expensive. And so that comes in for thirty-six thousand. Twenty-four H P laptops for teachers is thirty-three thousand two thirty-nine. Our I T company is not able to give us a quote for Macbooks. We have about a half of our staff like Apple, half of them don't like Apple, so we try to like, give them their preference because if somebody tried to.
I would be a not Apple person.
See, if you tried to give me, I would know how to do my job.
Other than this Apple machine, that's it.
Right, so we try to, those personal choices with this, right? It's like poker patsy. Yeah, it, it, there's no middle ground here. So I had to estimate a number. We're going to have to try to look at possibilities of getting those on those devices directly either from Apple or from another another company maybe that, that we have that, that we are able to work with. So I estimated it approximately forty thousand because eight, because Macs typically run a little more expensive than H P's. And then cases for Chromebooks and laptops. So all of our cases, you, you can see them on the tables here. A lot of them are in very, very, very poor condition. They've lasted a long time, but we are needing to replace them. This particular cases out of, it's no, it's discontinued. So we're looking at just replacing all four hundred and then also getting cases for all of the new teacher laptops as well. And so all of that together.
These cases are the cases we bought during the pandemic, right? In twenty-twenty, so they're five-year old.
Yes. And they, some of them have seen better.
I remember, I remember getting one when it was brand new, shiny in the drive-through pickup. I'm not even kidding. With James's name on it, in the drive-through pickup, you get the Chromebook to go back home, so we can go to school. Oh, have you seen five weirder actually, okay? They are pretty.
Some of them are in pretty decent shape. The middle's not so much. Okay, any other questions on technology?
I think on those ones, I, I have two questions, actually. I do. Are all of these expenses with one vendor or are they multiple vendors?
Okay, that's a good question.
And then if they are, in either event, are they C E S vendors that are already all approved, ones we have relationships with?
Okay, so everything on this list that you see, except for the Mac laptops is through our current I T company and they are through Aces and we already, it's like, so I don't have to, there's no issues there, okay? And so they can, they can get the cases for us at their cost. They, they actually sent me links about how much the cases are retail versus what they're going to sell them to us for. So we have, so there's some good pricing there. The Macbooks are going to be the problem. And so we've got to, we've got to figure out that piece. And Rhonda and Laura, do you have any thoughts on this and how we've handled the Macbooks in the past?
Like where we've ordered them from or handled them?
How, yeah, where did we get them from?
Directly from Apple. That you have an, well, you should have an online government account. If you don't have that, Laura, let me know. Because I.
Okay, I, I don't think I do.
Okay, yeah, there, we bought it online. So I'll try to find the username and password.
And Rhonda, just for, if it's already a dedicated setup, public government account for New Mexico with Apple, we don't have to do any procurement, right?
No, well, I mean, yeah, we do because it's not, I mean, we could just piggyback off of another vendor. I, I guess I'll look at what your policy says. I don't know what you guys approved last year.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but I think.
Yeah, I mean, we, we get the, it's through a government account and we get the government discounting, but I still think we have to honor the fixed asset rule.
Well, that and I just wanted to make sure that we're not running afoul of any procurement issues because we're not using a Aces or a C E S vendor, right?
Oh, no, no.
Rhonda, can you repeat what you said? I think you got cut off a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said that won't be an issue, not using a C E S vendor. Well, we'll just have to look at the rules on what you guys approved last year. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just making sure as I keep talking. So we'll just have to look at what you approved last year. So I'll get that from Laura to see what the fixed asset rule is. And it just, because I mean, you guys are way under the sixty thousand.
Are you talking about the threshold, Rhonda, that we picked?
Yeah.
It's seventy-five.
It is seventy-five, yeah, so you guys should be okay.
So we do make a time fixed asset purchase of seventy-five thousand, no more than seventy-five thousand?
Right, from the same vendor.
So that's a different vendor. We're still under the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold.
Right.
Okay, and then the other pieces, the server, the Chromebooks, the H Ps, that's one vendor, right?
Yes.
And they're all C E S vendors though, right?
Aces, yes.
Yeah.
And then the cases for the Chromebooks and the laptops are a different vendor?
No, so the, the Chromebooks, the H P laptops and the cases and the server are all the same vendor. The only thing that's a different vendor are the Macbooks.
So then somebody smarter than me tell me, we don't have to worry about the seventy-five thousand if we're using an approved vendor, is that right? So since it's, since those are all Aces and we're over seventy-five grand with them.
So the seventy-five grand comes into fixed asset, the sixty grand is procured.
Okay, so I still have the same question.
Right, so the seventy-five thousand, I, I don't know that well enough. Rhonda and Laura, can you, can either of you speak to that? Because I know we talked about it a little bit during the inventory.
Well, as, as I'm looking at all these, none of those would fall into that because they're all separate. So the server's fourteen thousand, that is, that's its own item. The Chromebooks are all the same thing, but that's only twenty-six. But so if you were getting enough Chromebooks that equal the seventy-five thousand, then you'd have to capitalize that.
Okay.
So they wouldn't consider the Chromebook and the laptops as similar items for the seventy-five K? I guess that's my concern too is I, I know it's like an aggregate of similar items. Could we argue those are separate and different?
Oh, yeah.
That's lucky. That's all the same vendor. We're getting one invoice from one person for way more than seventy-five thousand or sixty thousand.
Right, but it's the type of product. So like, if you're getting a server and a bunch of Chromebooks, you wouldn't include the server in that seventy-five K for capitalization because it's a completely different type of, of asset that you're looking at. When they talk about aggregate of assets, they're talking about similar ones. If you're buying them seventy-five K or more, then we have to treat them like fixed assets instead of supply assets.
Okay. We did, and we did talk to Jason about this when we were doing inventory on Friday and he did not seem concerned.
Okay, very, Jason, Jason, does that what you said, Veronica, not concerned?
That's correct.
Thank you. I mean, because this is also for me, you know, to use Aaron's words, the, apart from the Macs, which we have a question mark about, these are no-brainers for me too, in terms of upgrading our technology to provide the services to the students and staff, and particularly the server. So you know, I just want to make sure that when we combine all those numbers together, we're not running afoul of our policies or any procurement requirements. And if you guys are confident that we're not, then I can feel okay about that.
And I feel like that's where I would defer to Veronica, Laura and Rhonda, some financial experts.
It was mostly going to be on the accounting side. Once, once the purchase is made and we look at everything in aggregate, it would just be on the accounting side. There was no issue. It is our internal policy to. It is our internal policy that says whether or not we would have to include in fixed assets. And if so, it's on the accounting side. It's, it's not an issue. So Jason was not concerned, um, when we talked about purchasing, you know, making the two different purchases. The fact that the MacBook is gonna be on a completely separate vendor actually helps the conversation that we had on Friday because we were at that time assuming everything was gonna be in one, in one purchase. I, I do not see any issues with this.
Okay, I just don't want an audit finding that we spent more money than, and didn't comply with our own policy. That's all I'm worried about.
It wasn't about spending the money. It was about making sure that we just, uh, do the proper accounting for it based on what our policy has outlined. Laura, am I remembering that correctly?
You are. You said it perfectly.
Thank you guys. Sorry. You should have heard me the other night. I'm like, any more questions for the Financial Brain Trust? Oh, Financial Brain Trust, by the way, Veronica, because we did that, Veronica, because we would get too close.
Okay, any other discussion on technology? All right, moving on, Fabian. All right, furniture. So I put out a survey to staff and asked them different questions that included, sorry, getting my spreadsheet up. Um, I asked them to prioritize their top furnish, furniture needs and wish list items. I asked them to also think about, um, any furniture that they have that is broken, unsafe, unusable, and needs to be discarded, discarded. Um, any furniture that is damaged or doesn't function correctly, but is still usable with some repair work done to it. And then any furniture that they would like to trade out with somebody else. So we're looking at it kind of as a whole. Um, and then with all of the, in thinking about the things that, that needed to be discarded, things that needed to be repaired, things they wanted to swap, what, after that, what is, what's still on their wish list? And then that kind of brought us down to what are, what are we looking at ordering for furniture? Um, the furniture request that came in included desks for students as well as staff and tables for students. So a combination of desks and tables. Um, for various classrooms, for various purposes, we have a lot of mismatched tables, mismatched desks and things that are just old and not functional. So people of course want things that work together, which is, makes sense. We also had a lot of requests for chairs, matching chairs. Uh, we have a lot of giddy giddy chairs, but we don't have as many bigger people chairs. And so there were a lot of requests for different chairs for both students and staff. A lot of requests for various storage solutions. We have cabinets like this over here where you can, they, we've had people come in to try to repair them. There's, they're just not repairable anymore. They don't close, they don't lock, they're just, they, and they become a bit of a hazard. So a lot of requests for storage solutions, a lot of requests for rugs because that's something that just gets yucky over time. And then a lot of the K ones requested, um, different types of imaginative play furniture, like kitchens. You know, little, you know, little incubies and things like that. So, um, I, I had to put an approximate on this because, well, I had the item price, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it, that it includes shipping. And shipping varies depending on the company and the, and the item. So, um, and then I need to also factor in, um, for hiring people to put it all together. So that's where I came up with approximately seventy-five thousand.
What vendors are we using for this?
They are all on our approved vendor, or they are all right now, companies that we use except for Amazon. We took Amazon off the list because we can only purchase so much at a time with Amazon before they kind of lock us out until we can get our invoice paid and then, and so it's, we get backed up a little bit this time of year with Amazon. So the companies that I told people they could order from are classroom furniture, discount, school supply, Lake Shore, Sam's Club, school furniture for less, school outfitters, school specialty staples, Innuve.
Will they be able to get a lot of this in before the end of the month?
Well, that's a great question, Rhonda. I was, yeah, I don't know. Um, Laura, thoughts on that?
I don't know, but I'm gonna try my best to at least get it all ordered by then.
Um, yeah, just my concern on the furniture. Cause I know the computers can probably come in pretty quick, but the furniture sometimes takes a while. And without it being like construction in progress, I just don't want you to get stuck where you have that large order for next year. And they pull the funds and they don't count that as money already obligated. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I thought we had talked about if we had the money encumbered by, by June thirtieth.
Yeah, well, it could help, it should help. But that's what I was saying, like last time, they didn't even consider that. That's why, um, the year before, Roberta talked about, uh, doing, what do you call that? Oh, I can't even think of what, what she wanted us to do the year before.
I was to do a resolution to encumber all the funds.
Yeah, so, well, yeah, so anyway, so I'm just, I just think if you get it, if you're able to get it in before June thirtieth, that's safer for them not pulling those funds, even if it already has been encumbered.
Okay. So you're thinking that, even, even if we have, you know, and it's a, because it would cross over two fiscal years, that's where we're gonna, we can run, um, if we have to receive.
Yeah, because they're gonna ask, when did you acquire? When did you pay it? So it could be if you acquired it by June thirtieth and didn't pay it until July, that's fine, because you actually acquired it then. I, yeah, of all the things you, you presented, I think you'll get them all before June thirtieth. You know, of course, like the lease payments and all that will be before June thirtieth. But furniture sometimes takes a while, especially during the summer.
I know, I mean, there are, I mean, Uline is a company we've worked with quite a bit and their stuff comes in very, very quickly. Um, Lake Shore, um, I, seems like we.
They take a while sometimes. I think I had a rug last year that took a couple of six weeks to come in.
Okay. And some of these other companies we just have accounts with that I haven't personally ordered or used them, so I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I'm with Rhonda on this one. This one feels like it's got too much risk involved. Cause of the timing. If we did that in April, I wouldn't be worried, but the timing does make me concerned on this.
I know either way you need it. You probably haven't ordered furniture since we signed the lease to purchase. And I'm sure, I mean, if, if worst case scenario, you probably have your SB nine you can use, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
You want, excuse me, use this? Sorry. Could we use this opportunity to call them and say, look, um, we're prepared to buy some furniture, but you have to get here by June thirtieth. Can you make it happen?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we could approve it subject to delivery by June thirtieth. And if they can't, then they can't, and we move on to something else.
Okay.
I think it's worth a try.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on that?
No, I'm gonna have some overall money questions once we get through this list.
Yeah, yeah. All right, asphalt at the NX. So, um, this is, so we just did this at the main building, using the same exact company. They're a CES vendor or ACES vendor. They're one of those, um, CES actually. And so looking at, um, doing the same work over at the NX, uh, that would be the basketball court, the entire parking area, wrapping around to the back. Um, they did send an updated quote today. Um, it's, uh, it was a little bit lower than what I have in here, but they also needed to come out and do one more look tomorrow before they finalized everything. So I just left it with a little buffer.
Okay, and on this one, because it's construction, if we encumber it and they finish it after the, into the fiscal year, that's okay?
Yeah, they're looking at, right now their timeline would be August. And then this one's gonna actually come back up for conversation when I get to capital, the capital housing conversation. All right, moving on to the next one, um, front door visitor entry. So looking at having a, um, a little more secure entry to the school is thinking about security. So keeping the front doors locked at all times. Right now, all of our other doors are always locked and staff can only access with a key card entry. And so we're looking at doing something very similar with the front. I'm working with two different companies right now. I have a quote from one company, but their system is not compatible with our current key card system. And so they're trying to figure that piece out. And so that I'm also trying to work with our security system to see if they offer something similar. So the idea is that staff would be able to come up, use their key card to gain entry. But visitors who don't have a key card would have to buzz in. There would be some kind of conversation with somebody in the front office and then, and the person would let them in.
Yeah, I, I will say that, that tap this past year, that's how their front is. You have to bring the three D dinghy and then somebody talks to you and they have a camera. It looks like you make sure that you might be who you say you are before they open the door.
Right, and they don't look threatening. Exactly. So that's, um, and so based on the, the one quote that I have right now, I'm, I'm, I have an approximate of ten thousand dollars on this pending what they're able to figure out with our current system. Cause what I don't wanna have is, I don't wanna have two separate key card systems that I have, that we're having to manage. I want it to be all in one system, because otherwise it just becomes one more thing we have to take care of.
Who's the vendor for the original key cards?
Um, it's our alarm company, which has changed over multiple times. And I think right now it's rapid fire.
That's you're talking to me to see if they have something as well.
Yes, yes. And then the other company that gave me a quote is a, a company called Elite. Okay, any other conversation on that? Okay. All right, building and playground improvements. There is a whole lot in this one. This is the company I was talking to you all about at the last meeting where they are a CES vendor. They do a whole lot of things. So there's a whole lot in this one. And I think this is the one that was like a little over a million dollars. Um, so I have it broken down into areas. So for the front of the school, which is the area just to the north of the front doors, we're looking at, um, including some concrete planter boxes with seating. We have a lot of parents who come, they hang out in the mornings to wait and wait for the gate to open. They hang out in the afternoons, wait for dismissal. So we thought, you know, having some seating out there would be really nice. And then having as planter boxes, then it would just add to the attractiveness. And then putting, laying some turf down over here, just to make it a nice area. In front of the school for signage, uh, we are looking at a digital marquee on the southwest corner of the school. And I actually have a little, and the people online probably are not gonna be able to see this. But what this looks, what this would look like is it would sit perpendicular to, uh, to mountain. Okay, so it would sit like this, perpendicular. And then it would be double sided. So it's gonna, it says Alice King Community School. It's a little tiny mock-up. And above it is gonna be a digital screen. And then on the backside, it'll be the exact same thing. Okay, and then it's gonna have some metal tree, our little, our little logo that stands next to it. The tree and this section where the words are would be six foot tall. And then the screen would be an additional four foot. So the whole thing would stand ten foot tall so that people can see it coming from both directions down mountain. Okay, that's one sign. The other sign is to replace on the southeast corner, down the other direction. And this is a little mock-up of that. And it would stand six feet tall total, which would be the height of our fence. And it would sit at the same angle as the current signs, which is on a diagonal to the road. Um, and then in front of the building, um, we are looking at, um, when the building was designed, um, Michelle Negrete had designed, uh, some, a really nice, who was the architect at the time? She designed, um, a really cool sign with, with electricity and all kinds of stuff. My understanding is that if you, if you walk out to the front, there's five concrete squares that are out in that walkway area that are already, um, already, there's already electricity to them. Cause it's already all laid out. We, they, they just ran out of time and out of money for the project. So signs were not something that they were able to get to when all of the renovations were done back in twenty sixteen. So what they are proposing, let me see if I have it here. And I can, I can pass this around and people online, I think I have an email version of this. I can, I can have drawn up on the screen. You pass these around for people to look at. And then let me get my email version real quick. And the electricity and electric cables and everything is included in the process of this digital? Yes.
Oh, those are the other ones. This is just the one on top of the door. I mean, you've shown us these ones.
Yes.
Those are the area here.
Yes.
Just the one on top.
Okay, yes, I do have it. So, I'm figuring, I'm gonna, I'm gonna forward this email to you. And once you are able to open the PowerPoint, it's gonna be on page fourteen.
Okay.
Uh, I'm very happy about all this. So the, the sign, um, that would be in front of this school would be very, I forget how many feet tall it would stand. And it would have lighted blocks on one side and it would block underneath it. So it's like an entryway up to the school. Yeah.
I've never been seeing anything like that in this school.
No, no, and I think, yeah, I think it would just give a lot of curb appeal. I, I do think, you know, when you see the outside of our building and our school, you would never know that it looks like this on the inside because the, the outside just needs some love. Yeah, we need some good signs and stuff going on. Did it come through?
Not yet. It came through on my end, but I'm getting it up on this one.
Okay. Sorry, I should have thought to send that to you. I had a timer. I apologize. I tried to be ready.
There it is. This PDF?
Yes.
Okay.
When you were talking about power, is that the lighting to, so for the sign and for the?
Yeah, so there, so, so when the electricity that's ran already out to the front was intended for a sign.
I got you.
Mm-hmm. So they would just have to tie it into it. And then you would scroll down to page fourteen. Yeah. Yeah, these are all photos of, of work that this company has done.
I have the page numbers up here, so just tell me when.
Okay, keep going. This is like the, the product, the breakout of all the things that I'm talking to you about. And it's gonna be that page right there.
There we go.
Yeah. So the two signs on the left are the same thing, just different angles. So it's got the tree with the little schoolhouse sitting on top. It has these blocks down on the side and those look light up. And then on the right hand side, the three columns, um, have little cutouts of things for little symbols for like art and music, math, literacy, and then those would be backlit. And then the sign in the middle is actually the digital marquee, the two-sided digital marquee that would stand ten foot tall. And then the one on the far right is the one that would be on the southwest corner that would just sit at a diagonal.
So like the digital signage that we, we have to have someone that can, you like utilize a software to put messaging and stuff up there.
Yeah, I'm gonna try a bit because I'm, I'm on the digital marquee since she's worked here, so she's.
So it's not like I made this contract to.
I'm scared for you. Yeah.
No, that's, that's why people do it, say, you know, one employee change them every day or a few months.
We still need communication.
Or outside or whatever.
And we have so much traffic, right? Parents are here every day, so what a great way to get information out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the information on the signs. Um, I think, uh, the next thing that I'll just share is about our balcony. Uh, the quote includes, um, for, to make improvements to our balcony, which would be to put a shade cam- canopy over the balcony that has a vertical overhang, so that all of that shaded. It is so miserably hot up there that nobody uses it. It's wasted space. And it's a nice face, yeah. And then they're looking, uh, we're also looking at replacing the decking on, on it because the, what the, the material that's there now is, it's, it's gross, but it also is highly reflective. It's, it's bright and white and bright fluorescent yellow. And it just, the sun reflecting off of it. It's just not a good combination. And so looking at updating all of that. Then if you wanna flip to the next, um, slide, we're looking at fencing and gates. So replacing all of our gates with security gates. The security gates would be a panic bar on the inside to open the gate. On the outside, it would be a key lock that would obviously be key to match up all the staff members key. Um, and then it would have, um, a panel on the inside of the gate installed, so that people just can't reach through the bars and open, and do the panic bar. So that, so that would be nice. Uh, we're looking at replacing all of the shorter chain link fences to be the taller six foot security fence to match with around the perimeter. And then replacing all of the parking lot gates with motorized gates that are six foot tall. So that it just, it's all secure, all the perimeter is secure.
Keep all the latins that we go against.
Okay, so the drainage areas, um, with, we have, I talked, I'm sure you've heard me talk about the rocks on the playgrounds and how there are numismas. Uh, but we're looking at upgrading three of the different drainage areas where they have the larger sized rocks, um, with what they call a geosal ground grid. And that basically is, it's like, there are still rocks, but the rocks are not movable. And, and then the water is able to go through. I mean, you engineer, people probably understand this way more than I do. I kinda get a gist of it, but, I mean, it sounds cool, but as far as how it actually works and, and what that looks like, I'm not a hundred percent sure on. But I love the idea of the kids not being able to move the rocks, but yet the water can still go where it needs to go. To me, that, but those are the big pieces there. And then for the windows, we have like, something like eighty-five exterior windows or something like that. So all of these little windows, I mean, there's five in this room alone. Their start, the seals on the outside are starting to deteriorate and we're getting leaks. So we're looking at replacing all the seals and repainting, um, all of the exterior windows. And then on the next slide, for the playgrounds, we're looking at replacing the artificial turf on both fields, replacing the gravel walkways with concrete, uh, putting a shade canopy over both playground structures. So we have a structure on this little kid playground right out here, and then the brand new crab trap that we put in, putting shade canopies over both of those, and then putting a netting behind the basketball goal, so that the balls don't go into the parking lot. And then in the bathrooms, we are looking at tailing the bathrooms, um, up to the ceiling along with the help office to minimize kids etching into this sheet rock and doing graffiti. So all of that, we're looking at a little over a billion dollars, and this is with a CES vendor. All right, now, if you go into the next slide, I'll talk about capital outlay. So we have two separate capital outlay appropriations that say the exact same thing. We applied the exact same, same thing two years in a row. And that is to plan, design, construct, purchase and equip playground improvements at the school, including landscaping, field turf and drainage. In 2023, we were awarded 220,000 and that amount of money reverts back in 2027. So we have two years still to spend that. And then in 2024, we were awarded 200, 200,000 and we have three years still on that appropriation. So what I am proposing is that for the, all the ex, um, building and exterior improvements that I just talked to you about, yes, it can be technically applied to capital outlay. I'm proposing using our, our carryover funds for it instead, holding our capital outlay since we still have two to three years on that money. Um, and, and we still have ideas for ways we could still use it that would match what we applied for. So one of the ideas was to, uh, or one of the ideas is to put shade canopies over each of the fields. We can never have too much shade in New Mexico. Um, we talked about replacing or refurbishing the metal carport canopy that's right out here. You, you, you can see it through the window and it's, it's in really bad shape out there. The other thing we've talked about is looking to see about putting a PE field behind the annex. So a lot of wasted space. People don't use it for parking. Um, I have no idea what that would look like, if it can be done, if it's feasible, but it's something that we feel like would actually be huge for us because we're constantly fighting for PE space. A gym is a wonderful thing, but the, but we got investment at 14 million.
You were gonna put it in that same area behind the annex?
No, we were gonna look at having to purchase property. So, yeah, yeah. So then thinking about something that's maybe, something more, a little more feasible in the short term would be seeing if we can get somebody out here to take a look to see if it's possible to put a field behind the annex and then some kind of sound barrier because the interstate's right there. So we still have, we have ideas for the 420,000. So which is why I'm proposing that we don't use capital outlay for the things that are in the, this quote. So that's what all I have to share. So discussion.
Yeah, all the improvements seem reasonable. I don't know from an accounting perspective, so. That's all these guys, but I mean, I think the adding a curb appeal. I mean, most of the lot of general maintenance for the parents, I think it seems like a good way to spend money, especially if it keeps this life, so.
And if you guys want to see the breakdown of that, the, the building and playground improvements, I, um, that's in that same document that I just emailed you. So if you want that pulled up, maybe you can pull it up if you wanna take a look at how that breaks down.
I missed the last discussion. Was there, was there like a meet? I know that they were, we were worried about them pulling carryover, but we know it's imminent.
No, no, we don't know.
That's what's producing the eminent discussion is the unknown. And the lack of a resolution being sufficient based on what we've been told. Um, I think I need to understand what this does to our budget next year if we spend the complete amount that you're proposing because based on the starting number and what we're proposing, that leaves us with 672,159. So how does that impact FYB's six budget? By uploading all this money now?
Laura and Rhonda, do either of you wanna chime in?
So you're asking how it affects our carryover balance for next year?
Yeah, if we only over 672,159, what does that do to the budget we passed? Cause we passed a budget based on carryover of this amount, right?
Yeah. So Laura, I was just texting her. She said you guys have, um, you budget 2.2 million. Is that right, Laura? In carryover?
Yeah, for carryover.
Yeah.
Yeah, so our whole budget.
But then that still leaves.
Press on 2 million dollars for carryover.
Right, but our, but our operating budget, remember, we can't use carryover for salaries or contracted services. Um, so we get, we, so our, our operating budget that we just does not have an impact on carryover. Um, what we did look at was having to use some of our SB nine money for some of our contracted services for part of our budget, because we can't use carryover for some of those things.
Yeah, but for the things we can use carryover, it's in the budget. So that's what I, I mean, I don't know, Laura, if, or if, if you can pull it up and show us. So that might.
I guess my question to Laura then is in reality, how much of that? Cause even though you can't like technically say, hey, we're using the carryover for salaries, was there an additional amount to the carryover that you were using for overhead expenses?
No, there wasn't. We, we based all the, the items on S U G. And then, um, because the contracted services wouldn't all be covered under that with the salaries and benefits, we moved it to SB nine.
For the contracted services, and so for salaries and benefits, it was S U G. But to Rhonda's point, for anything else that's not salary and benefits, how much were we relying on the carryover balance to carry us forward?
I'm not sure. I'm gonna have to pull it up and look at it.
Yeah, I guess what it, what it comes down to is after, cause I know like when I'm entering in budget, I'm like, okay, here's the salaries. Here's, I put everything that we absolutely need. And then there's like this balance that I have to like, oh my gosh, where do I just put this? Cause you have to, you know, balance the zero.
Right, you're talking about when I put the budget on like OBMS, I typically put it in 2,600 function. That's where I've really put it in, just in case we have like a major expenditure for like a repair or something. Um, that's where I.
Yeah, do you, do you remember what that amount was?
I don't. I'm gonna have to pull it up and look at it.
Okay, I'm sorry. I should have asked that earlier, but I was like, I guess I, I knew we were gonna have a lot, but I'm like, okay, we wanna approve just what's not gonna hurt the budget next year and, and still give us a little bit of carryover in the following year.
Do, do we have?
If I'm understanding Mahdi's question is if we pretend that we got fully swept, we didn't spend any of this money, got fully swept and started, you know, the year at zero, does our budget balance? Is that the question, Mahdi?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah. If I, Laura, if I remember correctly, that was our concern when we did the budget. And so we did not anticipate going, having any of our operating budget go into carryover because we were concerned about what would happen if the money was swept.
Right, and, and I don't think we've ever included the carryover amount in the operating budget presentation. We've only ever really looked, I thought, at S U G and then like SB nine options.
Laura, are you, well, yeah, Laura, are you at a place where you can actually open up the?
No, I can't, but I did email it out. If anyone can pull it up from that last.
I'm gonna try to look for it. Just wait a second.
April 21st or around April 21st? If so, I might have it.
Yeah, I have. Get me recently, Laura, the, the one that was GC approved, the estimated budget, is that what you want pulled up?
Yes, please.
All right, you got it. I have it. Fabian, I think it's sent here right now. Oh, you know what? Mine has names on it.
There was an earlier version right before that sent to you. That doesn't have any names, I think.
Okay, thank you.
So what's the full of all these things proposed together?
Like 1.5.
1, 5, 5, 2, 0, 0, 6.
And while we're looking for these documents, my understanding of our conundrum is if we spend the 1.5, we carry, and we don't get swept, we carry forward 600. Um, if we don't spend the 1.5 and say spent, uh, one, we'd carry over 1.1 if it didn't get swept. If we didn't spend any of it and they decided to sweep, we would have essentially lost all that money. Is that basically what we're trying to deal with here?
So that's a question I have. Do they really sweep it to zero? Or do they allow a certain balance in the accounts? Like, I just don't know what they've done in the past and I'm curious about that. Cause I feel like sweeping all the schools to zero kind of puts them on a precarious situation.
Right, yeah, they, they actually take a percentage.
Is it, what, is it like a general percentage that you usually see, Rhonda, or is it?
No, they've all, since I've been in this for 20 years, they've only swept our account once, ever. And I, I honestly, I, I don't remember the percentage offhand, but it was a percentage of our carryover. It was quite a bit.
Rhonda, but that was in 2018, right?
Yes.
So let me ask my question.
It's been bad years, I mean, financial years before that, and they didn't decide to sweep for 12, 13, 14, honey.
So let me, while, while we're pulling up the budget, let me ask, try and ask it another way. Um, if we, if we had this carried over and it doesn't go away, its purpose would be for the things that we are contemplating purchasing right now? Or would it also be to pay, the carryover can pay for salary and benefits? No, we can't, okay.
Okay.
All right, it's up.
Okay, so it, it, it's a, Laura and Rhonda, I don't know if you can see it.
Yes, okay, so you do have carryover of 2,420 included in the budget. And then I can see, yeah, see down at the bottom though, you still have a surplus after. So that's the line item I was looking for, the fund balance. She still has the 2,304,000. So that's after she budgeted everything. That's after budgeting her salaries, her contracted services, supplies. She even put furniture in there, or wait, no, she put utilities, sorry. Um, yeah, everything's in there. And so even with that, so that's kind of the balance I was looking at. So even though we in OBMS balanced to zero, we always have that extra balance that we present to the board to show you like, after we've entered everything, this would look like our carryover balance for next fiscal year. So with that, she still has 2,304,000.
So.
Christie, it's only a little.
But.
I don't do math in accounting, but our annual revenue includes the 2.4. And so if we didn't have the 2.4 right now, because we're, that's the carryover that we're talking about. If there's no 2.4, there's no surplus.
1.4.
Well, the, it, I read it as there would be a negative 115,000 dollar surplus. Am I reading that right?
Wait, what are you reading? There's a negative 115?
So if we get the carryover from the prior year is 2.42 million. And then if you look at what the surplus would be at the end of, you know, next year, it's 2.3 million. So the difference appears to be approximately 115,000. Am I reading that right?
Yes, and then, but that means like 115,000 was used somewhere in the budget. So that goes back to Mahdi Puss's original question, right? Like how much of this, this year's carryover, you know, last year's carryover was gonna be used in this budget? It's about 115,000. I knew it wasn't significant, but I just wanted to see these numbers up on the screen.
So your question, cause I'm not a math brain. I'm gonna trust you math brains, cause I am not it. Um, if you deleted line number seven.
Yes.
Would the fund balance at the bottom then be a negative or a positive?
A negative.
Negative 150,000. Yeah, Fabian, go ahead and hit your enable button. And then, uh, I, I wanna say we ran through this, something similar when we were, we're gonna approve the budget. So if you enable the editing on the, on the worksheet and then just remove or zero out D seven. This is what, uh.
Okay, so now put in to that cell 672,159. Okay, that's what I needed to see. That's my math brain is stupid. I needed to see that. That makes sense to everybody? Cause that's.
Carryover is 1.5.
Presuming we did everything Christie's list, which I'm not certain we're going to. But if we did everything on Christie's list, that's what we have left to carry.
Yeah.
So that's where we left. Okay, that's what I needed to share. Thank you.
That's still pretty amazing.
It is, and that's. It is, and that's, that's a good, that, I just needed to see it with my own eyeballs.
So I, I remember many, many years ago, how we, there were years when we had no carryover.
When I first started, we were in real bad place. We didn't get P P L and, and we had no carryover, right?
The places that were using that hundred and change or whatever, whatever it was in carryover to support this year's budget, are those things that are gonna be reoccurring, like it's gonna be a hundred and fifteen every year? Or are those like this year, we're using it because, you know, we're doing something this year, but it's not gonna be in the budget next year? I guess that's, that's similar to what you were asking, but are, yeah, we really depend on that extra money.
Something to keep in mind, and Marty Puss is reminding me, P P L N, we haven't even applied that, that to the budget yet. It's like two hundred K this year.
Oh, that's true.
And the S E G is based on headcount though, right? So that's where we have the wiggle room. So again, I mean, I, I appreciate all the work that is done into the wish list. I'm just not certain that the whole wish list will get granted. Because I feel like, given the unknown on the S E G, which is the big portion of how we pay all of our people. And we can't use the carryover, never mind, can't use the carryover. I'm just, this is why you need to let Marty stare at numbers. Because her brain will click in eventually.
Yeah, if it gets swept, it won't matter.
Yeah, if it's not there at all, so we could spend the money to improve our facilities.
Rhonda can say she thinks that the percentage of it's swept, but not the whole thing too, which seems like they should be more transparent about that.
We'll not be transparent about any of it.
No, it is maddening. They're asking us to be fiscally responsible and then not giving us the information to allow us to be fiscally responsible.
Exactly.
Well, I, I think what you also have to keep in mind is if they do a percent of your carryover to sweep and we're going in with, let's say, seven hundred fifty thousand by the time we put in P P L in, right? And they do a percentage of that, so not knowing what that percentage is and really truly, how much are we gonna end up with? In the end, whereas if you start with a bigger pot.
It could be a bigger.
You could still end up with a bigger pot.
You know, ten, ten percent of seven hundred thousand is, is very different than some ten percent of two point two million.
Exactly.
And I'd rather that go into the school if that's the end result.
And all of the, all of the proposals are well needed, um, for our school and facility. You know, so I, I, I don't have any reaction other than, you know, some of the concerns we've identified.
Costs don't usually go down too, so if these are things that you're gonna have to pay for in the next four or five years anyway, right? Seems like that, you know, could be more expensive in the future.
So Fabian, if you'll go to tab two where it says contracted services, on this page, you can see the line items where when we built the budget. Laura and I determined that those items would have to come out of S B nine. Because based on our eighty one twenty day count and, and where P E D had us build the budget, there wasn't enough to, you do everything through S E G. Um, and then we are potentially looking at, do we, are we gonna have that same enrollment as what P E D projected us at?
Can we use, can we use carryover to pay the contracted service? Yes?
Yeah, yes, is that, yes, can you do that, Laura?
Because essentially that's what we're doing. Okay, so we.
I'm sorry, I drew a blank on that.
We had estimated that we might have this number out of S B nine. Is that right?
Just the, just the line items. So like technology, plumbing, landscaping, our response, which is our alarm company, the elevator, that's what we were looking at using S B nine for, not the whole list.
Yeah, so that's what I was trying to figure out is that which pieces were S B nine and which pieces we could arguably use carryover for to pay if we don't have enough S E G if we hadn't. So I still think the numbers work, given the balance that if, if, if everything was approved. So if everything's not approved, that just increases that number at the bottom on fund balance. Is my math brain working, Rhonda? Yes, did I say that right?
It is, yes.
Okay guys, so anyone have any more questions about budget? The proposals, cause I think we need to try to figure out how to make some decisions now, so we can all go home. So Fabian, why don't you go back to the first, the big list that she, yeah, the page two, I think. Do we still have our zoomers? Yeah, okay. Okay, well, I think with regard to the two foundations, I think we should do different motions. And I think with regard to the two foundations, maybe we need two motions, or no, they're both the same. So, um, I mean, I'm inclined subject to further discussion to propose that we approve the repair and replacement fund expenditure and the foundation bill subject to auditor, discussion and confirmation on the second one that we're not having a fiscal year problem.
And, and if I might slightly amend the motion, I.
Proposing words, so please, please fix my words, Erin.
Yeah, no, no, ju- just, and I wouldn't mind, um, uh, confirmation even on the first one. You know, just have the auditor tell us, yeah, it's completely appropriate to pay that two hundred seven thousand dollars into the repair and placement fund. Um, you know, and, and if we can, and if not, then we're just gonna have to make the decision, you know, knowing subject, subject to risk. But if we could get their blessing in advance, that'd be great.
Yeah, and I, I feel the same on both of those, that I'd like blessing and I'd like additional confirmation on number two that we don't have a, a past fiscal year problem.
It may not be a bad idea then, Marty, to break them up into two separate motions?
Okay, that's fine. So I think then let's start with the first one. And I'll make a motion to approve pay, prepayment of all of the ballots we are obligated to pay on the repaired replacement fund under our lease subject to auditor comment and approval. I don't know if approval is the right word.
All second.
Okay, any further discussion? Is approval the right word in my motion or do we need to amend it?
No, you're, I think it's good.
I think it's, okay, very good. All right, any further discussion on number one? All right, all in favor?
Bye.
Any contrary? Motion passes. So that one is that amount.
Let, let me take a stab at the second one. I move to approve that we, um, spend funds for the bond disclosure requirements in the current period. And if allowable per the auditors for past periods.
Perfect. Can I have a second? Dave, did you have a comment?
No, sorry, I was talking to someone else.
Okay, um, all right. Any further discussions? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any contrary minded or opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes.
And that way, no matter what, they can move forward with this period.
Yes, because there is a bill for this period for those expenses.
And Ben's gonna talk about that on the, during the next page.
Okay, sorry, that's unwise. Okay, anyone wanna take a shot at proposing something on the technology equipment?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll move to approve the technology expenditures. Provided that no uh, expenditures violate either our sixty thousand dollar spend requirement or our seventy five thousand dollar spend requirement. There's probably a better way to phrase it.
Well, so is that an issue though?
Well, and I just wanna make sure it's not. My, my understanding is what I heard from you guys is it's not. I just wanted to be clear in our motion that we believe it's not.
What if we rephrased the motion to say, the motion to put the technical expenditures provided that there's no violation of our policies and procurement stuff. I don't know what we're just saying.
That, that's better.
Policies or something like that?
Policies or violations of procurement code, New Mexico State Procurement Code.
Yes, I like that. Did you get it? Okay. So Erin made that motion. Any second? Thank you. Um, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? All right, motion carries. Um, I do think, I don't know how I wanna address the last four. I'm generally okay on the furniture. I'm fine with the asphalt, the fur, the doors and that is fine. My concern is the big one, and I'd like to hear other people's thoughts. Because is there a way we can parse it out and approve pieces of it? Or does everyone, what, what does everyone think about that one? Like, do we wanna do it all? Do we wanna try to break it into pieces? Like, what is everybody thinking on the big ones?
I think you've got a lot of this. And this, they're, I think they're good improvements. I mean, I think you're, you're fixing up the building. It's great. It's not only is it great for the kids to care, but it's good. And so being about coming here in the future. And, and if that money gets swept, right, we don't know what percentage we take. You lose the benefit of all of that. And I think your analysis was good to see what we would be carrying over. Um, but in the, in the short term, at least five years out, even if you're using a hundred K a year, maybe a hundred K a year from carryover, you have time to plan for that.
Thank you, Donnie. If you had a comment, or Veronica, somebody did.
I, I have a question. Uh, so let's say this, all of this gets approved with the intention of using carryover. This is a lot of time and work and coordination for all of these different things. If approved with the intention of getting through as mu- much of it as possible, if there are items on this list that do not get handled, improved, completed in F Y twenty six, is there any problem with that floating into F Y twenty seven?
As long as the construction starts before the end of the fiscal year and it's a true contract that they get into, the timeframe, I mean, it's ideal to get it done within that fiscal year, but it would continue through the books as a, a fixed asset or a construction in progress and they would just keep deleting from that. So like, let's say into next year, they still had three hundred thousand left. They would just reallocate those to assets or to, um, yeah, to assets. And then leave the rest in construction in progress.
So by approving it, we are committing to saying, we're all in, this is, this is where the money is going. We're not gonna nix, nix any of these projects. We, these are full on. These are not just things that are being considered. They're, they're, they're definitely needs and we want to do in fiscal year. But if we can't, we would have to do the, the construction in progress, but it is a done deal. We're, we're making it happen as soon as possible.
Yes.
Just making sure that we say that out loud. Just making sure we say that out loud.
Executed, complete contract with the scope of work and term of the contract, then we're good, by the end of fiscal year.
Christie, you feel confident, General Contractors, is going to be able to fulfill everything by the end of the fiscal year?
For, for next fiscal year?
Well, well, we.
Coming fiscal year.
Yeah, that's it, we're both.
Yes, I think so, yes. Yes, I, I. Yes.
Feeling good about it.
I mean, I, one, one thing that I did ask for, um, I mean, please, no, this has been fast. And it's been a whole lot in a short period of time. I've had multiple conversations with them. Uh, I've looked at, they've sent pictures of projects that they've done. Um, I've asked for like contacts of, of these different places, like references. Um, that is the piece I can honestly say I have not been able to do is actually talk to any of the, any of the people who have worked directly with them. I had, I don't have any knowledge of, of them, other than I, I mean, I'm, I'm, we, we see their work. We, you know, I, I, and I used to work in Los Angeles, this company's based in Los Angeles. And it's like, oh yeah, I know that, it's fine, it looks really, really nice.
What's the name?
A R C, Arc Sports Consulting. Um, so, you know, that is my, my one piece. Um, I mean, if it were somebody like Exroplay, who we've had tons and tons of, we've done lots of work with them before, I would have, you know, I would have a little more to talk, to speak on, you know, but this is a, this is a different company. It's new. They do a lot. Um, they, they're, they're, they're much more varied in their work and what they're able to do. They work with a lot of contractors.
Yeah, well, and this is the one that time is not on our side. This is the one that we need to bless and they need to move to get an executed contract in the next three weeks.
Right, and I, and, and they understand our timeline with that and they have been really, really easy to work with. At, up to this point, I can say that with confidence. Um, I mean, it is, it is a lot of money, so I, I am, it, it makes me a little nervous just because it's such a big piece of, it's, it's a lot of money. And I, I don't want to put the school in any type of compromised position. Time has not been our friend with all of this, knowing that we needed to really think about encumbering by, by the end of the fiscal year. I mean, it's, yeah, I, I, I can say that I'm mostly confident, Pat, that I, that I go.
Because it is a big amount of money.
Yes.
Rh- Rhonda, I guess, one, I mean, one additional thing that I like to note from the financial people is that, uh, if we, if we can cover this now and we're planning to do all these things, the, the, there's legal obligation for the state to not sweep that money after we do that. Like, we, we know that if we encumber this, that we're a hundred percent, they're not gonna take those funds and we're gonna owe them anyway and not have to carry over to pay for it.
Go ahead.
Now go ahead, Rhonda.
Oh, is this, say, yeah, you know, you're right, they cannot take that as lot, but it has to be on our audit. Especially that construction in progress. So that's where I keep talking about, like, we have to be in a contract. Even if they just come in and start knocking walls down, whatever it is, you know, start digging, whatever they have to do, that has to all start before the end of the month.
And, and they are ready to do that.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, so once that happens, it's in our books and it reduces our carryover balance through the construction in progress.
Rhonda, would you be able to help us look at the contract and, and make sure um, all of the pieces of it before we sign off on it?
Yeah. Yeah, I can do that. You can send that to me.
So, and I think I'd also like to see how the rest of the board feels about the other two buckets before we approve the big one. Or do something to make one, which we could do, we're gonna approve it.
So with the asphalt at the end, it's, the, the one thing I can say is I, Anna and I do a lot of brainstorming today and thinking about all of these different pieces with capital outlay and everything. And I think we actually really. I think we actually really love the idea of exploring the option of a P E fill behind the annex. It's really needed. I've tried to figure out a space. Just, I mean, that's why we kind of, we started those conversations about a gym because. It's needed, right? And are the two bills that we have, they're utilized for recess, and we're always competing for space. And so we really love that idea. And so if we do asphalt. Um, at the annex, I I would probably want to. I I'm a little hesitant, I guess, because if if that's a project that we really would like to get some more information on. To see if it's even feasible, then I don't want to put brand new asphalt back there.
Agreed. And and I also think this one, I I don't know, let me answer the question, but. On this one. I like the idea of a P E field back there rather than asphalt myself. Um. And. On this one, if we were to do it. Um, is the contractor prepared to sign a contract and get working in the next three weeks?
Uh, they they wouldn't, on this one specifically, I asked about the timeline. They would not be able to start until the beginning of August.
Well, then I think there's our answer, because I don't think it helps us any if they can't be started this month. Um, and.
And it's something we could do with the legislative appropriations if we ever decided it was absolutely an essence.
That too, and I I really like the idea of of getting the kids a an actual P E sports field. I think there's a lot of different opportunities outside of P E to use that space if we can do that for extracurricular activities.
Yes.
For school.
Mm-hmm, different kind of club sports. And I know the middle school, they've been trying the last few years to. Start the middle schools to towards athletics. And I think there's a lot of. Different options we can do on that. So my choice would be to not do this one. Particularly, and then let's have the same conversation about the furniture. I know we're concerned, you know, yes, we need some new furniture. But um, the timing concerns. So what does everyone think on that? I mean, we can do a conditional approval. Based on timing. That makes clear. That if it cannot be completed in the next three weeks and here, that she doesn't proceed. But I don't know if you guys feel. The same way or what everyone's thinking on that, because with the big one, I mean, we have to go back and do some math, but it seems like. With the foundation ones, the techni- technological expenditures and the big. Facility improvements. You have.
Conditional on parts, I mean, basically. Furniture that can be checked and verified to be able to be deliverable within June. Up to this dollar amount can be purchased for, you know. As opposed to. Which is that we should be able to say, okay, we had this idea that we couldn't do it, but we were able to get. Forty thousand dollars worth of furniture that we needed within that time. Um, that at least they have a flexible way to do that.
I'm with Dom on that, like, up to seventy five again, wherever you can get them. That's how I feel.
Aaron, Rhonda.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. And the question, the question I have is that with all of the vendors that you have listed for this. If one vendor is not gonna be able to get it to you. Do you have multiple vendors you could check with? And if so, that's what I would encourage, just to try to get it all in. I would like to see it all happen, um, but yeah, definitely what we can get in and make sure that we have it before. The end of the fiscal period.
Laura, can I ask you how how this one makes you feel in terms of time and everything else going on?
It makes me nervous. Um. I can certainly try to check multiple vendors for multiple deadlines, but I mean, with how much furniture we're looking at. Uh, it's one person really doing a lot of that. Um. But I can try my best.
I mean, uh, I think Dominic's idea helps you with your discomfort and mine. If we can phrase the motion correctly. And, you know, Aaron, Dominic, maybe somebody help, but if we can. If we can phrase the motion correctly that says that you have up to. Seventy five thousand with approved. Vendors provided the orders can be delivered by June thirty. Then we authorize you to proceed to do that. And and if they can't, then you just stop. I mean, and if Laura doesn't have the time to make it happen, you have a. Approval to proceed, but if you can't, you can't try.
Yeah, and I just just sign note too, I would never do something with a deadline of June thirtieth, because watch a delay will happen or something. So honestly, just for reassurance, it's probably gonna even have to be a little before that to really make sure it's.
Well, and this one on the timing, Laura, too. I mean, I wanna be helpful and I wanna, you know, try to do it all and and improve what we can improve here. But this one makes me nervous because of the shipping issues, because everything.
Okay, so, what about this? What if we do it this way? What if I go back and I look through the P, everybody's. Wish list items. Care it down to what is essential. We order only what is essential, knowing that it may not come in by June thirtieth, and then we cover. If it if we, if there is a suite, then we cover, it can be covered through S B nine.
I think that's perfect.
What dollar amount? We need to give you a dollar amount, so you have room to be able to do that, though. To call it down. We gotta give you a.
Right.
A dollar amount. I mean, if. Do we have, if we give you the seventy five? And it all doesn't work, do we have enough in S B nine that it doesn't hit our budget in a bad way for next year to cover it? If we got a suite?
It's a dumb question. Some of this stuff. I mean, are there like warehouses anywhere or some to have some of this stuff for purchase that you don't? Have to buy and order, or is all of this? So, yeah, order and ship then.
Yeah. And the and and if there even was a place like that, they're probably not on an improved vendor list, so we have to be careful. We have to go.
All right, baby. We have two S B nine accounts. Um, three one seven oh one is the S B nine special appropriation. And we have at the um. It looks like for on our April financials, we had a little over a million dollars in there, so a million seventy three dollars. And then in three one seven oh three, we have, which is our S B nine state match, we had seventy five thousand in that.
But that's, but that's three one seven oh three, I think, is just for student technology, right, Rhonda?
Yeah, but that would be okay, even if some of the Chromebooks didn't come in on time.
Right, to cover it, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I was looking at, because you have the three one seven oh three, and then I think they gave you another allocation, didn't they, this year? In three one seven. You may have not got it. I ran across it, yeah, for the three one seven hundred. But, yeah. Okay, I'll look at that, too. But, yeah, you still have a lot of money in there anyway, in the three one seven oh three.
We do, and even the allocated contracted services we have going into S B nine, it's not, it's not very high. Um. But I feel like it would eat away that million quickly, and we consistently get in a good chunk each year from that.
Yeah.
Okay, what else is left? I feel like there's still one more left. Furniture, asphalt, that one.
This is Dave. I have a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Apparently I missed something, but I thought we talked about this last one. As long as we had a purchase order with a vendor, it was considered encumbered and the. State wouldn't steal that money. How come now we're saying we have to have it in a house? What did I miss?
Yeah, I feel the same way, Dave.
Well, because there's no way to record encumbrances on the financials. So when you're reporting, because remember, we're modified accrual, and the only things they take into consideration in modified accrual are those fixed assets. And construction. And so.
It seems, it seems idiotic for them to take money away on something that we already have a purchase order to acquire. And have the responsibility to pay the vendor.
I know, I completely agree. I think it's just harder to fight that, because that was one of the things that I, because when they swept that first time. We were, we didn't have a lot of money. Like, there was nothing to work with. So that's what a lot of people were kind of arguing, but I had all these purchase orders in place, and then they asked, well. When did you start receiving them? So that's, I mean, it just didn't, it didn't work out well for some of the schools.
And I I agree with Rhonda. I mean, I am hearing from multiple different groups of people that you are not safe with just a purchase order. And I think part of the mindset with it, like, even though we're saying we're obligating for it, I think the concern is. Are people just creating encumbrances and then releasing them in the new year? Um, whereas if you actually receive the item or if you're actually construction in progress, it's set in stone that that money is literally being used right now.
Yeah, they're not gonna force us to breach a contract.
Do you only have to receive one item on the order? Just possibly everything that? Everything on that order?
I would say they wanna see good efforts, real effort.
Yes, I agree with that. Like reassurance that, yes, the rest are coming, or something.
That's the sense for you and me.
Seems like a parallel.
Sorry, there were two people talking. I did not hear that. I'm sorry.
I was trying to protect Kat and I from this, and apologies. Go ahead, Dominic.
Yeah, what I was saying wasn't important. I was just saying, it's an analog to having a guy with a shuttle take out of. You know, take out one scoop and say that they've started constructions, like, let's say you have one chair from order or something.
Does it not show good faith effort that you have board approval and you have meeting minutes from that and you have a P O issued?
I would say it does show good effort, but that's, remember that, when I go back to the um request to obligate funds that Roberta wanted us to do. That did not help a lot of the schools.
Got it.
That that's why they kind of let that go this year, like, oh, it's kind of worthless. Just do construction if you need to.
Okay, so we're better off just really focusing on really the big one. Here, because it's construction, it'd be construction in progress.
That's what I'm feeling like, is that. The construction in progress and then maybe an up to on the furniture and see what you guys can do. But apart from that, I think the asphalt in the front door entry. This one feels like it can take you too much time. I mean, I wanna do it, but for the cost, I think we can fit that in.
Somewhere.
In a different round.
Yeah, or like you said, if if we do the up to seventy five K, you can order only the essentials. And then so you keep the balance, so what you grab order anyway, was the S B nine, I mean.
Aaron, any comments, thoughts, concerns?
Yep, I'm gonna try a motion. Um, I'm gonna move that um we authorize the administration. To purchase up to seventy five thousand dollars in furniture. Um, from our carryover funds. Um, with the with the stipulation that um they need to be up. Get approval from the vendor or get confirmation from the vendor. That um it will be delivered by June thirtieth.
I'll second that.
Go ahead, Rhonda. Okay, any further discussion?
I, yes, I have one more question, sorry. Um, let let's say. Um, and with the way the current motion was worded, I don't know if 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 this will even matter. But if we end up having to, like, if it can't come in and we've gotta use S B nine to cover it. What about the the labor to put it together? Can I can I use S B nine for that?
You can, but you can also include that in some of the quotes, too.
Mm-hmm, right, yes, that that's what I hope to do. If if there's things that offer it.
So purchase of any furniture. With inclusion of potential assembly costs, is that what you're asking to?
No, she's just asking if, I think the motion is sound. I think what she was asking was. If. If um, that does the amount of money we give her, if we don't get it done by the end and we use S B nine next year, if we do it, can we use S B nine? Not on this motion. If we get it done by the end of the year, get stuff in. That covers this one. It's the if, it's the the what if part, right? Okay, any uh further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I have. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. I would like to put in a minute, Dominic, just to be clear. That the motions that we did regarding the foundation and the technology expenditures. Um, every one of those motions is based on the carryover funds, using carryover funds to make those expenditures, and then we can do the latter option.
I'll do have the first.
The first one, that we didn't expressly say use carryover funds in the motion. They are all, these are all carryover fund motions.
So we're gonna talk about the.
The big one, I think that's the last one left.
Do you guys want to see the quote with the breakdown?
What are you guys thinking? Do you wanna try and take it apart, or do you just wanna bless it and let's go?
I'm good blending it.
I don't need to see.
Aaron?
Yeah, I'm I'm good with it as a as a whole.
Me too.
I mean, it's really exciting.
It is exciting, and it really is very exciting.
Yeah, so can I just share? I just wanna share and make sure I'm just being perfectly transparent. The quote that Fabian had up all ago is like for nine hundred fifty thousand. The the million eighteen thousand comes in because I, today we were like. What about the windows and what about the tile in the bathroom? They have not had a chance to get that back to me in writing.
But they gave you the number.
Yes, and a and a larger budget that may come in smaller.
So then I think this one's a an up to the number on the screen motion as well.
Yeah. And and not to exceed, and that way the contract is clear. There's there's no change orders, you know, that kind of thing.
Um, Rhonda, how, with with this, um. I mean, the the, I just wanna make sure I've got my head wrapped around it. They gave me a total price. Would we expect to see anything like taxes or anything like that?
Oh, yeah, they should have included the taxes, but yeah, that, it's all construction. It'll be taxed.
Yeah, it's all G R T.
Yeah, so that what what they gave me was a total price that did not include taxes.
Oh, shoot.
Last thing, and it just doesn't say.
I would ask them for, well, with taxes, any shipping and handling, because I've seen that worked into big construction projects and labor. Just make sure all those big ones are in.
Yeah, that's, I've seen that, too. They don't usually tax separately.
On the city R T rate for this building, seven point one, say one no. Where's city about, right? Well, and it's gonna change too on July one. So today's rate is seven point eight seven five. And is it gonna change for twenty twenty six?
I could call them, and I mean, they've been very, very responsive. I could call if it would help to find out about. Um, anything like shipping or. Anything else that we, any any unforeseen costs that are not written here.
Well, I'm just trying to get us to a number, to a nine.
Like, you could you could call them tomorrow, or you could call someone.
No, I could call them like right now.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Accounting manager. Because Sean, the G R T rates.
So we're in our board meeting right now, and we've had a couple of questions come up. I'm wondering if you could answer. Okay, so one of the questions has to do with um costs for um taxes or any shipping and handling or any other costs. That um that may come up that is not reflected in the vote. Okay, are you able to get ahold of him and ask him? Okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you.
Just give her two minutes, she'll, she'll call us, somebody else, and call me back.
No, let's just pretend that they changed, is one zero one eight five six eight, I mean, what did I say, seven twenty eight seven five?
Five thousand bucks or so.
Yep, you can math it way better than me. Eighty thousand, two twelve twenty-three, so I say we just add a hundred grand onto the quote if we don't get a number here.
Because we're not doing asphalt.
One point one, because we're not doing asphalt, we're not doing furniture, oh, we are doing furniture, but we're not doing asphalt, we're not doing visitor entry, and that's nine.
So we're not totally
Why were we not doing the visitor entry?
I don't know that we actually
Because they, she doesn't have enough information to know that we're gonna be able to, I mean, we can do a conditional, I guess, but
If it can be done by January.
Yeah, because of the technology problem with the key card, and whether they, maybe if it work with the vendor that we have.
If we, if we, uh, allow the old playground improvements, and we're doing one million, one hundred thousand, wouldn't that include the front door? I mean, isn't that possible? Can that be part of that description, too? Oh, no, because that's one vendor, right?
They're separate vendors.
Separate vendors. And I was just trying to get us to a number that would include any potential fees and GRT, so we could give you a motion.
Because we're saying up to, up to, yeah.
And what were you saying, Amity was supposed to add a hundred thousand to it?
Yeah.
Does that make you nervous, though, with carryover?
Oh, the whole thing makes me nervous, but
Effectively, at the one point.
I mean, we're still, effectively, if we don't do front door and asphalt, we're still effectively at the number you gave us.
Yeah, that's true.
So that's why I think for ten thousand dollars, Dominic, I would prefer not to do front door right now, because it's cheap enough that we could use capital outline or something else for it in future, it's not all that. I mean, it'd be really cool if the electric's there, I'm not saying I don't want to do it, I'm just saying for the timeframe we've got, let's get the big one done.
All right, you or Erin, just gonna, he's gonna do it.
Erin does words better than me.
He also talks slower than you.
Corr reporters love me for that.
Oh, we can wait for the callback, I just see what happens. Erin, think of
Or, or we could approve a hundred grand extra, and if they come back higher than that, then we say, all right, well, then we're gonna start pulling things out of the quote.
Yeah, leave it to your, just, your and Anna's discretion to start pulling things out.
Hello?
There you go.
Oh, good, thank you, yeah, and we tell you we're here in our short meeting, and we just had a few questions. Okay, so one of the questions that we have is, has to do with, is, if there are any, um, costs that would come up that are, that is not reflected in the quote, such as shipping and handling, or, uh, or grocery receipts tax.
Or simple.
Okay, okay, and you please speak. Okay, and you'll, would you be able to send me a revised quote with the, with the items that we talked about today, and that also includes grocery receipts tax? Okay, all right, great, thank you so much.
You have the number right now.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
Does he have a number, you know, about the paper?
You know what, they, the board would like to know if you have a, have a final number, even though it's, it's not written on, in a formal quote that, that I have in my hand, would you be able to tell us that number?
Number plus two per key.
Mm-hmm. And, and, and including the tile and the windows that I talked to Amity about today? Because we're looking at a, they're looking at approving a number up to a certain amount. Mm-hmm. The windows. I think she said thirty-five thousand. Um, Amity, so what was our grocery receipts, uh, percentage?
Seven point eight seven five.
Seven point eight seven five. Mm-hmm, seven point eight seven five. All right, let me just see if there's, if there are any other questions, hold on just a moment. All right, so our number is one million ninety-three thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars.
And that's with GRT and your numbers?
Mm-hmm, and the tile.
And, okay.
Mm-hmm, any other questions, boring?
Anyone else have any other questions? We got a number with GRTs. Okay.
All right, I'm gonna read the number back to you one more time, just to make sure. Okay, I'm just gonna read the number back to you one more time, I have one million ninety-three thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars, zero cents, forty-six cents. All right, all right, all right, I think, I think we got it, all right, all right, we're good, we don't have any other questions, I'll follow up. I, I guess, what is, I guess, yes, I do, we do have another question, actually, um. We would need to get a fully executed contract in place, and construction started before June thirtieth, do you foresee any problems with that? All right, very good.
Alum, thank you for responding to us at seven o'clock at night.
Yeah, and, oh, yeah, the board president said thank you for responding to us at seven o'clock at night. All right, well, thank you, all right, I'll follow up with you probably tomorrow. All right, he was just driving me from, out from another job, so no problem.
Yeah, I, I, I've lived that life for most of my life, I have you, so, but it's still nice to be appreciated for responding to us.
That's right.
Even if it's your job.
A, and so just quick question, um, A R C is an approved vendor through, um, C E S or one of those services, right?
They are, and you know what that made me think about, um, to ask whether or not this has C E S pricing? I'm gonna call him back real quick. This is the hard part of trying to do everything, is to turn around. Hi, it's Christie again, I'm, I'm sorry, another question, um, I know we talked about you being a C E S vendor, but does the quote include C E S pricing? Okay, all right, and, and
Going equipment? And then we'll be part of which I'm going to follow this up.
Okay, and okay, and even with having to go through C E S, do you feel like we can get everything in place and, and everything started before the end of June?
Yeah.
All right, Laura, Rhonda, do you see a problem with that?
No, not at all.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all right, I think we're good, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, magic motion man, you're up.
All right, I would like to make a motion to authorize the administration to enter into a contract with A R C Sports Consulting and Design in an amount not to exceed one million, one hundred thousand dollars for, uh, various building and playground improvements, as quoted by A R C Sports Consulting and Design. To be entered into, um, no later, and construction began no later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I will second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously.
And are you the joke for joy here, Ricky?
All right, everyone, I think that concludes the business that we needed to address this evening. Um, Rhonda and I will work on getting, first people get us a evaluation next week, we'll work on getting that done and turn it around for our eighteenth and, um, I think at this point, given where we're at, um, I'll, I'll deal with it on the agenda, but I will say that we're probably gonna evaluate council after the end of the fiscal year, because we need to get a significant new contract before we
And Christie and Laura, I want to congratulate you being able to do that, but I'm so sorry, because I know how much work that's gonna be, and how much it's gonna add to the audit.
I know, it's gonna be
It's okay, we'll figure it out.
And, yeah, and thank you, guys, um, I, I would like this on the record, thank you to Christie, and Anna, and Danielle, and Laura, and Rhonda, and whoever else has moved the world in the last, uh, week and a half to get us to where we are today, so thank you very much.
Yeah, great job.
Excellent job.
Yes, thank you.
All right, I need to adjourn and go home, second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Making yourselves available, and everyone being here tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you guys next week. Bye.